of O'Conawak joint comment, our committee of the whole meeting and Plan Commission meeting. Has appropriate meeting been made to both entities?
Yes, your honor, it has.
If you would please call roll first for the common council.
Alderman Douglas. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
And at this time, if you could call a roll for the city of O'Conawak Plan Commission.
Alder-- or, excuse me, Commissioner Brotheridge.
Here.
Mayor Magnus.
Here.
Commissioner Valley. Commissioner Frederick.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Vandy Sandy.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
I make a motion to move Kevin over to that side.
I second it. Are present for both.
Kevin, get back here. We don't-- so we're gonna have a presentation today. This is a discussion item for the council and the Plan Commission. Council members and commissioners, if there's somebody in the audience that you would like to have come up and speak, please let me know and we'll bring that person up. We have several of the folks that are involved in the development here. We also have representation from the community as well. So if you have that request, you can make that request of me. If you have questions, you can ask them directly. So we're looking forward to a really nice presentation and some good dialogue, and this will help with the direction for this moving forward. So Jason, would you like to make the introductions, please?
Thank you, Mayor Magnus, common council, Plan Commission. We have a joint meeting this evening. We don't do this very often, so this is kind of a unique, special presentation. We have Pabst Farms as the focus tonight. We have four pending projects within the Pabst Farms development currently going for approvals. For the last couple of years, the city council, as well as staff, has been asking Pabst Farms to do a master plan for this area, and they've took those words to heart, and they've done a very nice job that you're gonna see of the remaining lands of out there, a new master plan for all of these areas. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time. I can comment later in the evening if you're wondering what the approval process is or something to that effect, but I think I'll turn it over to Peter Bell, the president of Pabst Farms.
We will be going through item 2A, the presentation discussion of the Pabst Farms concept master plan for the build-out of the available lands within the city of O'Conawak. Mr. Bell.
Good evening. I'm Peter Bell with Pabst Farms Development. My partner, Bill Niemann, is sitting over there. We started Pabst Farms back in 2002, so it's been 21 years we've been at this process. And I did some math looking at my programs this afternoon before I came up. We had 1,500 acres here at Pabst Farms, and it was roughly 1,000 that was in the city of O'Conawak and 500 acres in Summit. Today, we are left with about 450 acres, of which 75% of those acreage are in the city of O'Conawak and 25% is in Summit. This master plan only deals with the land in the city of O'Conawak. We have not had any interaction or dialogue with Summit, and we don't intend to on the shorthand. We wanna focus on what we feel is the most important lands in the city of O'Conawak. So 21 years ago, we came back with a master plan, and it had a lot of visionary things that was very relevant back in 2000. Times have changed a lot, and we've updated this plan to be relevant as to where land planning is done today, where the needs of the community are, and so forth. We've hired Tesco Associates. They started with us back in 2000 doing the original plan. They've done a lot of other work in western Waukesha County and are very experienced in land planning. And we wanted to develop something that was very relevant in today's and also complementary to what's going on with Olympia, to tie all of this together in a cohesive pattern. So we're gonna bring them up there, and they'll walk you through this plan. It's been vetted with a series of meetings with the city already and a few other public officials, but it is by no means final in nature. So this is a work in progress, but we do expect to bring this forward in a more formal way in January and have expectations to have the approvals in place by March so that we can get on the street and talk to people in earnest who have interest in the property right now but wanna understand what the end game is. So with that said, we'll introduce Danny O'Brien and Nick Patera from the Tesco Associates, who have presented this plan for us.
Great. And for the audience and for council, as we go through this presentation, if there's something that is confusing, it's a fairly detailed process, please let us know. We wanna make sure everyone's clear on this. And council members, for your information, Aldermans Rosick and Altman-Cloth have already reviewed these on behalf of their districts in that area to take the first shot look at this from a council standpoint. But for the public, this is the first time the commissioners have seen this, and this is the first time the rest of the council has viewed these plans. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nick Patera. I'm principal of Tesco Associates, and with me is Danny O'Brien.
Can you speak a little further into that microphone, please?
Yes.
Pull it up. There we go.
There we go. I'll start over. Nick Patera, P-A-T-E-R-A. I'm principal of Tesco Associates. We're located in Evanston, Illinois. Danny O'Brien is with me. He and I have tag teamed together on putting a plan together for a master plan for the Farms, Pabst Farms property. My reign goes back, as Peter Bell had said, to the beginnings with Eastlake Village in the layout with Eastlake, and then on to the rest of the residential developments. So I've seen Pabst Farms for 23 years or so now, and now our role here is to come up with a master plan, to put all the pieces together. You know, Pabst Farms has matured. It still has some intent to become a more cohesive and a more integrated development. One of the roles that we have here is to come up with compatible land use. Jason Gallo had mentioned that there's four different petitions back before the city right now. Two of the primary ones are the senior residential development with Capri. They're here tonight that I know you've seen. And then we've also done the master planning for the Wingspan development along 94 east of Summit Avenue, west of what we call the woods. And so really what we're trying to do is to make sure that they don't look like they're just pieces without a full picture and a full, complete puzzle. One of the things that we wanted to do is to make sure that we have integrated roadways, integrated network of walkways, and open space systems, so it doesn't look like it's just piecemeal with one thing coming after the other. And the land uses and the connectivity is an important element that we're looking to try and connect open space with the rest of the, call it, the interior parts of the development. So what we're looking at is trying to accommodate Capri, which you've seen, as well as the Wingspan development, but starting up at the northwest corner, up at Pabst Road and O'Conawak-- thanks, Danny-- Parkway, or, yeah, O'Conawak Parkway, there's a 27-acre piece. This is, this piece was zoned as--
Business park.
Business park. And now what we're really looking to do, and now this is because of the influence of what has happened with Olympia. We've worked on Olympia in its earlier stages. We know that it's a major influence, and along the 67 Summit corridor, this is going to have street frontage, two stoplights, one at O'Conawak Parkway and one up at Pabst Road, but become a development for commercial rather than business park. And so really because of the presence of roadway, because of presence of access and visibility, this is showing a street-fronted buildings with the architecture facing the streets, parking tucked in back behind. You'll see this is a theme for what we're doing, is we're trying to emphasize architecture in the land planning. We're trying to say it's convenient and accessible, but what you're not looking at is a big sea of parking. This is not a big, huge grocery store parking lot that you see from Summit Avenue, but you're seeing architecture and storefront or store-side or end elevations with the architecture. The road connections are going through. I'm gonna move through these with some speed, but in addition to the areas that we're calling Area A, which is on the left-hand side of the screen, there's another area that's called X. This is residential development between the two. It's wetland and open space. There is a trail network. Danny's showing the yellow trail that's connecting to the south that would thread through and around this development to connect residential and retail, commercial together. And this is very much along the lines of what we've done on all of these developments was to try and integrate what's it like to live here? What's it like to walk through here? What's it like to not only come in here by car? Is it convenient? But what is it like to walk to these locations or to have recreation or to have nature integrated into the parcels? If we go to the next parcel, this is just to the west of what you looked at on Pabst and along the north side of Lake Country Trail, but this is just showing single-family residential with a primary entrance coming in. Everybody is looking from their back of their house at open space. So this is flavored to say, if I wanna walk out my back door, I can look at open space on nearly all the sides, including the middle where the letter D is with stormwater. And again, the interconnected trails and a public right-of-way looping this together and connecting, again, lining up with Whitetail Lane to the north. So we're making sure we have road alignments, if you can still hear me, I don't mean to-- we have it from the microphone-- for this parcel. I'll keep moving. We can come back to any one of these. This is looking to the south of O'Conawak Parkway, and to the left is Summit Avenue. These are all general commercial parcels that are on the B areas. And again, you're starting to see the pattern that we've looked at with connected roadways, so you don't have to go back out onto a main thoroughfare to go from one use to the next, but you can interconnect between uses. As we go from these commercial uses on the B, we go to the letter Z, and that's commercial use with the reddish brown building, and then storage buildings with the purple buildings. These would be condominium storage buildings. Moving down to Valley Road, this is a commercial use again. What we're really trying to emphasize here is commercial, commercial. It's revenue generation, but also done in a way that has some relationship to the adjacent parcels. This is something else that we started to put into play, is that these buildings, they can be bigger buildings. These are 30,000, about 30,000 square foot buildings. These brown buildings on C each, but to try and put some relief between buildings, so it's not just a continuous storefront, but it's broken. So there could be a plaza. There could be some pedestrian space between someplace that you can have gathering and social interaction as part of the commercial. So it's not just cut-and-dry commercial, but it has some personality to it. If we go to the next piece, I think you've all seen this, but I'll go through. This is the Capri development. We did not do this plan, but we show how it integrates together with a small commercial piece at the northwest corner at Valley and Summit. No, it's at Pabst Farm. Yeah, at Pabst Farm. But this is, again, commercial use, and we're looking for some services, businesses that can be freestanding. But again, what you're seeing is architecture facing the street, parking available but tucked in, and then it integrates together with Capri development. I really like the Capri site plan, the way that there's a central place in the buildings. I don't need to kind of go through this if you've all seen this, but I think we can go back and talk about it. The views coming into the Capri development and the frontage on the open space and the views to the wetland and open space and water areas are really, I think, gonna make this a hit, and it's also a catalyst, I think, for helping the commercial and some of the surrounding land uses. As we go south to the next-- thanks, Danny-- this is a parcel that we refer to as, these aren't really exciting names, H. But it helps us keep these sorted out. But we've come up with about two or three different commercial developments. There's no residential in this, but now here we are just west of Fleet Farm, and they're showing, we're showing a central retail shopping commons in the middle of that parcel with, in essence, outlots. The gray areas, every time we show these, if you haven't figured this, those are all parking areas. Again, showing the yellow pedestrian connections either around it or through it, so that we're not just forgetting about people who live here, people who work here have a way to get in to developments, not just only auto-oriented. Some of the other uses that we had contemplated, just have different building configurations, but this would be more of a Main Street type of a concept where the cursor is running up and down, but that would be a walkable-type Main Street that you could still park and walk and look at storefronts and windows, but you still have parking. We think that this is a very key piece at the off-ramp of 94 and Summit, and really like the idea that this could be kind of an iconic structure. So that's why we tried, you know, whether it's one plan or another plan. This was a third plan that kind of looks along the lines of what Fleet Farm has-- am I saying that backwards? Fleet Farm, Farm, Fleet. Fleet Farm, thank you.
Farm, Fleet.
Thank you. Thank you. That you're extending the storefront of Fleet Farm and having kind of a power center, again, taking interest in the intersection at 94 and Summit, that say that this needs to be a building that has some presence and has some personality and has some recognition. Once again, the idea of having pedestrian interconnection to some of the surrounding commercial, that's the H1 piece, is smaller commercial, and then having a plaza that breaks it up that says, here's something that I can recognize whether I'm driving by at the off-ramp or whether I'm coming to park the plaza areas between some of the buildings, whether it's the smaller buildings that I had shown you on an earlier version or this one. This is a reoccurring theme. So this is what we're trying to do, is to come up with something that has unity, whether we're up at the north end of the Pabst property or in the middle of the property or at the south of the property. There's something that says there's virtue here that is worth people coming to visit. I'm gonna keep going. Now we're down on the Pabst 59 Wingspan parcel, and along 94 is the technology and innovation hub. Something unique is going on with the architecture and the surroundings that we set back from 94, so we're keeping the landscape corridor along 94. And we have a passive open space at the south corner up against the woods. That would be for breaks during work for people who wanted to come walk a trail and to see nature. But what we've really done is tucked in kind of the business end of the building, so we're not showing kind of the working end of the building, but we're really showing a handsome architectural facade to the 94 frontage as well as along our other road frontages, so that the, call it, the mechanical ends of the building are tucked in. This is not a truck dock building. This is limited truck and service, like, just like a loading service, but this isn't just umpteen truck docks on these buildings. These are-- Chris Coleman is here from Wingspan, and he can explain a little bit more about what that's doing. As I go north, this is residential. The darker brown buildings are primarily residential rental buildings, and then they transition to retail along Pabst Farm Boulevard. The ground floor of the residential buildings will be mixed-use, so it's residential on top of retail on the ground floor. You're doing a great job with the cursor. Thank you. And then to the east, or to the west, we have more of this straight-up commercial use. This is accessed, you know, again, from Pabst Farm Boulevard with-- these have potential to be drive-thru-type businesses, which have become very popular lately, but the lighter tan buildings have drive-thru stacking lanes that loop through. But again, what you're seeing is landscape as a setback from the street frontage to screen the buildings and give them at least a base to not feel like they're just crowding the streetscape. How are we doing? East of the woods, this present zoning on this isn't changing. This purple Y parcel is the limit of the O'Conawak corporate limits. Oh, that's it. Sorry, that's it. Yeah, the Summit and the O'Conawak are at the yellow line. We're not contemplating any changes to what's existing business park zoning in the, in these parcels. The Y and the KS and the KN, they're all business park, business park for all of those parcels. The LS and LN parcels, S being Summit, has not been shown as anything in this room for the time being, although we have thoughts, but that's not part of our presentation. So I think we're back to the overall master plan. If there's some thoughts or questions that you have, we're here. I don't know if you wanna hear from anybody else at this point, but we're happy to answer questions. I tried to keep this brief, and I really kind of moved through this quickly, so I'm happy--
You went through it very quickly. There's a lot of details in here, but thank you. We have council and commissioners. We have, I believe, a representative from all of the different development groups for this area. So as I mentioned earlier, if you'd like to ask to bring, have somebody up to clarify things to a greater detail, we can do that, and we can do-- if we could take the image that's on the screen and zoom that out a little bit, or zoom it in a little bit, so it makes it bigger, that might help the audience as well. Perfect, great, thank you. So what I'd like to do is open it up for comments, questions from commissioners or from council members. Alderman Ellis.
So on page L-61, the Pabst Farms 59 Wingspan development, are those rental apartments? You were kind of going so fast I didn't hear.
Sorry.
Are those rental apartments or are they condos? What are they?
These would be rental apartments.
Commissioners, questions?
Mayor, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. And anyone can jump up to answer this. The Wingspan part of it, the residential aspect of it, those buildings are gonna be three stories high? And maybe, Chris, maybe, I mean, whoever wants to answer that, just for the public's benefit.
My name is Chris Coleman. I'm with Wingspan Development. Yes, there'll be three-story garden apartments.
Okay. And do we know how many total units residential? You told me this before--
Yeah, sorry. And that plan will be--
Separately, right.
Yeah, generally consistent with the plan that we presented, with the exception that we're incorporating the comments that we received from the council and the comments that we're getting from staff. But it's 171 units.
And do you need a plan development change to do that, or what can you build as of right there?
Yeah, we do not need a plan development change for the residential use. Residential use is granted within the GDP for that area. That area encompassed the whole south side to the woods, so we're allocating within what you're seeing tonight, all of the residential is going east of Farm Fleet.
That was it for you.
Actually, I got one for Chris. So the 171 is between those four, or those five?
Correct, five buildings. And then the two that are all the way to the north, Nick Patera mentioned this, but there's ground floor retail on those two to create that-- I don't know if you recall, we talked about that--
Oh, yes.
--main street shopping feel.
The back three are strict residential.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Gallo.
I'd like to just clarify the process, because Alderman Rosick asked, do you need to get a new GDP for this plan that's on the screen? And the answer that Chris gave is accurate. We do not need a new general development plan. For the people in the audience, what a general plan is, is it kind of shows building locations and uses and driveways and parking lot areas. What Chris was referring to is the use of the prior GDP that the city approved 10 years ago in 2014 did allow for some residential use in this area. But we are gonna have to get a new GDP, because it didn't look anything like this. So they are gonna have to come back and have a public hearing that the residents can speak based on this new plan that's before you. A general development plan is just that, is general, but any major substantial change shall look like this. Now, the other plan that we had didn't have any residential use shown, but they did offer it in the text that there would be allowances for some residential uses. So I don't think we need to amend the underlying zoning. We don't have to amend the comprehensive plan, but we do have to get a different general development plan. We also have to talk about these buildings up here. These are called technology and innovation buildings. They're 80,000 square feet apiece, and, you know, we've talked to the council about, when they came before you previously, about what is gonna take place in those buildings. I think it's really important that we get a handle on that. I've been working with their team, and they created a definition that we would then incorporate into the GDP of what uses are allowed in there. We don't wanna see, like, heavy manufacturing, for example, in those buildings. These are supposed to be techno-- technology and innovation-type, cutting-edge uses, and they agreed to that, and they have a definition that they'll show. So that's just one of the elements. There's all these different sections that they went through. Each one has a different process to get approval, so-- but for this particular area, we'd be redoing the GDP. We'd have to talk about the location of this one as well. The GDP, geographically, do we want it to stop at the woods? Do we want it to come out where prior? Do we want it to come all the way to the property boundaries? This is all zoned. This is now, for everyone's reference, this is, we're talking east of the woods. Fleet Farm is way over here. With this GDP, I have a little bit of concern with that, because we don't have any diagrams of what would go there. Is it gonna be one big building, or is it gonna be a bunch of small buildings? This is already zoned business park, as well as this. We could actually remove this from the GDP, or we could include it, and then we could get some control and say, we don't wanna see a big Amazon distribution center here of a million square feet. We could put language in. That might be a smart strategy for the council to do it, to say what you don't want in there. So, and then they'll have to come back anyway for some site plan approvals, but we could give direction. So that's just another thought on this area in particular.
Can you go back to that last slide, Jason? Do you mind? So when you look at Y and KS, that's not included in the current plan development overlay, correct?
Correct.
And KN, LN-- oh, no, KN is also part of the city too, right?
Yes. Correct.
Because your little yellow line denotes Summit to the city. I do notice, since the last time I saw this plan, that there was, in addition to the Y section that says distribution centers over 500,000 not allowed, essentially. That's a good start. I think it's still very large. Targets 1.5 million square feet. I don't think we wanna be known as a city of distribution centers and apartments, just generally speaking. I think there's been a lot of pushback for a lot of those large, large-scale developments. I don't know what else could go there. But if we leave out K-- if we don't put any restrictions and we leave out KN, Y, and KS, and it'll prove everything else, anything could go in there. They may limit what goes in Y, but not necessarily what goes in the rest of Y, KS, or KN. And it sounds like I'm talking gibberish with all those letters, but--
No, that's accurate. Those areas, KN, Y, and KS, are just zoned business park right now. You gotta remember, these zonings were placed over 20 years ago. We didn't know what was gonna happen. They do butt up to residential, which is not a real good use for compatibility. Usually you want some type of a transition in there. So, you know, we don't know. I don't think the applicant knows what-- these are sizable parcels, and maybe we're getting too far ahead of ourselves. They have projects that they want to get moved forward on. They don't want this to delay the process, but they would be willing, as Alderman Rosick said, there's some restrictions right here. Says, no distribution center over 500,000 square feet allowed in the PD, and that's language that they're offering up, saying, we will restrict ourselves, but they don't know. But they don't want that to hold up this development here, and then this, they want flexibility. They showed three different options. They don't know what's gonna happen, but this is one that's pending approval that they have an interested party in right now. They don't have any-- They don't have any interest in this area or this area.
Well, that's not, that's partially true. We know that there's some interest in the other parcels for distribution center. We know that that's true. We've seen plans. Capri had plans, Winkspan had plans, that showed distribution center there.
I think they were just showing a general plan of what could potentially be there.
Potentially go in.
Yeah.
So, a couple of other quick questions. When we, when we go back to Capri and, and the buildings on the other side, so near that pond, near Village Crossings, Capri also, in order for them to do what they want to do there, right now that's all zoned commercial, correct?
Correct. The story behind this one, it is zoned commercial. I think initially it was called Village Square, and they, there was a lot of office-type buildings. The office, really the dynamic of that has changed over the years. Now they would like to change it from commercial to a residential use. Being a senior living facility, I don't think the people in the audience heard what it's all is. There's different components. There's memory care, there's assisted living, and then there's independent condo, not condominiums, but duplex units that would be owned by Capri. They are here tonight. They own their, their developments. They maintain them, they keep them, they don't sell them. But because this is zoned commercial, I had concerns as a city planner of where else could commercial go? Because we don't have, we're running out of commercial room, especially in Pabst Farms. So that was the, the reasoning behind this 25-acre piece. They both are very similar in size, that this area, that is zoned business park, which would allow things as warehouses, storage units-
Distribution center. Maybe we could put a distribution center there.
This seems to be a better fit for commercial, because it's directly across from Olympia Fields, and these could be commercial. Now, the buildings might not come here, but, you know, small box, mid-box, that type of thing could, could come up in here or down here and, and locate, if that's possible. So I wanted to make sure that this PD, plan development overlay came in at the same time as the Capri to offset the zoning, so we're not losing commercial land. So it's, all kind of goes together from a big planning standpoint.
But Jay, so back to my original question, though. Capri will need a zoning change, not just a PD overlay change. It'll need a full zoning change, correct?
Correct. And they'll need a comprehensive plan amendment, which is a little bit more rigorous than just a, a PD ordinance. That's a 30-day notice and, right, because our comprehensive plan shows us as, as commercial. It never intended to be residential in this area. But from a transitional standpoint, you know, you could argue pros and cons. You have existing residential, you have high-end condominiums, Village Crossing, and then this is a nice transition into the commercial area. Right now, having commercial zoning, you could put pretty intensive uses. You could put fast food restaurants, or whatever you want, you know, taverns, bars, nightclubs, all right here. And this is a nice transition into, you know, to the hotel, and then the, the ultimate Starbucks and Pick 'n Save Center over there. So, I could make that argument, but they, they claim they really like this site because of the, the proximity of the commercial lands to the, to the future north and the future south and to the existing west. We want to make sure as staff that there's walkability and connectivity for these people to walk and, and bike and, and get to these other uses. So that's a really important factor. Staff's been pressing them hard for walkability plans to share with you.
Commissioners, do you have any comments? Commissioner Frederick.
I've got a few. First off, I'd like the concept of the master plan to start out with. It's a better guide for today. I really wish you would have had this on Journey 21 that was in place, because that would have fit here and now, instead of where it's at. That's water over the dam, but that's what we learned. I like the pedestrian connections of this. And from my standpoint, or I guess the other planning commissioners are probably in the same predicament that I am, first time really going through this and seeing it, so understand that when Nick, or Mr. Patera said, you know, you've seen this before, we really haven't. So it's hard to put a lot of comments to it. I mean, I have some concerns about the apartments in the X area. That's one access to Pabst Road. I have concerns with the access in general in here. We hear a lot of complaints about Pabst Farm Boulevard. A lot of detail needs to be worked into that, I think. Large buildings that Alderman Rosick alluded to, I think on the Y piece, I don't see that as a fit out here. But we really have to look closely at what our general commercial zoning does in this area. I got a few other comments, but I mean, they're more particular, I think, to the details. I'll let other people talk first.
Okay. Commissioner Vandy's adding?
Yeah, I'll just lay to the business park east of the woods. Again, it's unrealistic that we're going to have a million square foot or 500,000 square foot distribution center. It just doesn't fit with what those users want in the world today with the residential and the access points. But you've got to keep in mind, Milwaukee and the greater regional area, the average buildings on industrial sites are 100 to 250,000 square feet, half of what the half-million square foot that you're talking about here. We do have a definite shortage of industrial property in the greater Economwalk area, if not Lake Country, all the way heading into the Waukesha County line. So if we want our businesses to grow, we want employment out here, we want things to continue to prosper, we're going to need industrial land. So be very careful on how we approach, how limited we want this land. There's very good industrial development. It's sizable in structure and what can be built here, so.
Great. Commissioner Brotheridge?
I'm going to echo similar comments made by, by other commissioners. I, I think of, just in general, the connectivity from a pedestrian standpoint is great to see, but I also think of traffic patterns and the in-and-outs. One thing that drew my attention, again, I'm just kind of reacting to some of this, seeing this for the first time, is like H, just getting in and out of some of those tighter areas, just depending on how that layout eventually plays out.
Great. Alderman, any other comments?
I have a comment about the, there was a couple points made about this single access on Pabst Road. This is zoned multifamily to begin with, but I don't think it was ever shown, this predates me a little bit, but shown as, as this large of units. These, these could be anywhere from 20 to 30 or 40-unit buildings. That's a lot of units on a single access point, being surrounded with wetlands on the different sides. There would only be one in and one out. So this might have to go down to a smaller density, smaller total number of units. We'll have to get feedback from police and fire regarding that, but you know, you only have one access in and out. At least on this one, it's just kind of the similar situation. You have one access. They lined it up directly across from Whitetail Lane, and it is a double access. So if there is a car accident or something, that at least they could scoot around it and have traffic go on, on this side. I'm not as worried about this one here. It is smaller lots. This is zoned, single-family residential right now, about three units per acre. So this does comply with the zoning requirements. But as commissioners have stated, you know, this, this one having one access with, you know, potentially, I, I don't know the number of units, you know, anywhere from 100 to 200 units or something out here. It, it could be concerning with emergency vehicles out there. So we'll, we'll work on that. That could maybe be changed to four units, or even duplexes or something.
And a reminder, a lot of people have not seen these plans, folks. This is the first time, this is an introduction for open discussion. Alderman Ellis.
Staying with that one page, L dash two dot one, not with this page, the other, the other page, L dash two dot one, if you can bring that up. Nope. There it is. Okay. I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the access points also. The reason there being is because if you've got a fire truck and an EMT, they're going to use both those lanes and nobody's going to be able to get out. Bottom line. Because they're going to, they want as much room as they possibly can. So you may want to reconfigure that. Also, did I read this, 10,000 square feet minimum?
You're reading that correctly.
Family lot?
It is.
Okay.
That's the way it's shown. If, if there needs to be some coordination, obviously, with emergency services, you know, does it mean that we have to stick with a dual lane like we have at Whitetail? Does it mean that we have twin lanes that come in off of one at the northeast and one at the northwest corner? You know, things like that could work. We like the idea that you're entering in and looking into an open space, into a, into a green commons area when you're entering into the community. But I think that there's some flexibility and safety comes first.
Yeah. Because you can always have an emergency-only road somewhere in that area.
There could be emergency vehicle access.
That's correct, yeah.
Good point.
This way, it could kind of continue the flow, because if I'm in, say, 63, and now I'm trying to get out, and you've got emergency vehicles on the egress and ingress, I'm not getting out. Okay?
Yeah.
So you, you may want to have an, an area where emergency vehicles only, so they can come and go, and it still keeps the flow of traffic for other people.
Right. If it's something between seven, eight, or something between 37, 38, somewhere-
Correct, yes.
At those corners.
Yeah.
Good comment.
What I thought we'd do is let's go around the horn with the Alderman, and then come back for final questions or more comments from those in the audience. And again, if you want to pass and ask, ask questions, it's fully, it's fully up to you, because again, you're seeing this in a short period of time. Alderman Maroni, we're going to start with you. Comments or questions that you'd like to, or would you like to bring anybody up from the audience?
No, I just had a comment regarding, I kind of agree with Commissioner here. Just some general concerns about access points. We talked about that. Traffic patterns, you know, bunching up commercial areas with residential and how that's going to flow, coming off of like the main corridor, like Summit Avenue. Again, seeing this for the first time, just trying to get an idea of what the plan is here. But it looks extensive, and it looks like it's detailed. But again, like the traffic patterns, Alderman Ellis brought that up, you know, with, you know, emergency vehicles and just making sure that we have access points, you know, dealing with that on the other side of the street there, with the development at Old Highlander, and making sure that, you know, we have emergency vehicles on that side. So just with this new development, just want to make sure that there's ins and outs.
Right. I think one of the challenges and the talents that we've kind of brought to this is that you really are looking at something that has a lot of detail. There's no question. We've had, you know, a solid six months of time to pour over these plans. We're still open to constructive recommendations. Police, fire, emergency services, all have to, have to work. And also, you're looking at frankly, quite a broad range of mixed use. You know, we have everything from single-family residential down to multifamily to retail ground floor and residential above, business, commercial. And I think that's one of the beauties of this plan, is that this, this, this plan offers a potential to say, I can, I can live here, I can work here, I can recreate, I can walk. And these are, are, you know, all kind of working parts of the community. So this is, this, there's some flexibility at this point to make sure that all those pieces work together. And this is the first time that we've really started to see Pabst Farms kind of fill in the, the pieces of the puzzle. So I think your comments are constructive and taken well.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Yeah. Oh, I wouldn't say we're filling in the pieces just yet. It's another plan, right? And I think this kind of hearkens back to an original plan that at least I wasn't on the council when this was first pitched, but it was like a high-end retail shopping area. I remember. We're in a large, you know, it was a large change from that. And so the people who, you know, built houses out there, who live out there right now, they might have a different, yeah, I mean, this is clearly different than I think, than they probably thought, what they were buying into at the time that they did that. I appreciate there being a new plan proposed and finally getting, you know, more of a holistic view on what we think we have going on up here. I would definitely agree with the Journey 21 piece, because when I look at how this just fits, I, you know, you just think, how did, how did we end up? You know, we still have the general commercial all around it, so I wonder, are we going to get the general commercial there? Because we've already been told that, you know, that wasn't happening, that wasn't working, that's why we had to have the Journey 21 there. So part of me wonders, is that kind of a pie in the sky we're hoping? On the Winkspan development piece, I did have a specific question. That technology hub area, do we see that being as a single owner? Was that what the plan was again? I, I can't remember. Was that, was that one single business, or people leasing out that were going to be working within that hub area?
It'll be, it'll be a mix. So I, to clarify your question, in terms of a single user, I think it's, I think it's unlikely that we would have a single user to take a whole 80,000 square foot building.
Okay.
But we might.
So you don't see this, I mean, as a data center sort of option?
I can tell you that specifically not a data center, because that was discussed earlier, and unfortunately, it didn't work.
Okay.
But not a data center.
Okay. So we, we might be looking at then multiple owners for that area? Or would it be one owner and then people leasing out those spaces?
It would either be, it would either be one owner, and this is an important point, I'm glad you're bringing this up. It'd either be one owner, or multiple owners, all tied into very strict covenant conditions and restrictions regarding the architectural aesthetic of the hub. Right? So that's part of the, the value of that property, is that it's going to be unique. It's going to be a destination for technology and innovation. And the only way that you can create that destination is if you control the aesthetic.
What is the technology and innovation? What does that mean? Can you be a little more specific?
Yeah, so-
Just I'm trying to figure it out.
So it can be something that is, think of it as cutting-edge design, manufacturing, not, not heavy manufacturing, but like prototype manufacturing, 3D printing, lab space, things like that.
Okay. And what are we thinking jobs-wise that that could mean? I mean, will it result in jobs at all?
Yeah, it will result in jobs. I can't give you a specific number.
Like even a ballpark, like 10, 15?
Well, I think that you could, per, per-
Well, just for that whole space. I mean, for that whole space, what do you think-
For the whole 320,000 square feet?
Yeah. What do you think it creates?
I would say probably 100, 120.
And then, I mean, good family paying, full-time-
Oh, absolutely.
Types of jobs, so.
Yeah, if it's high-tech, it should be-
Yeah. I mean, because that's really attractive, and when Commissioner Vandy's Andy talked about the industrial opportunities out there, obviously, you know, maybe there's hesitancy with the distribution center, but just in terms of, you know, good paying opportunities, preserving those, I, I think it's important, because this is kind of an area that I think that attracts that. So I appreciate more clarification on the technology hub. I'm, I'm really excited about that. I mean, it sounds like a great thing. I'm, I'm actually kind of disappointed the data center piece didn't work out, and we just see what happened in Mount Pleasant, and you know what's happening with Microsoft. I think there's a lot of good things happening there.
And you guys have your own utility. And we'd like to discuss that more. This just wasn't the right location and size and pricing.
So, and then I had a question on the Capri-
Pricing.
The Capri senior living. I mean, what, what, I know that's not you. Well, what is-
If the folks from Capri could come up, that would be great. And we haven't been up yet, so if you could please identify yourself, that'd be great.
Yeah, if you could just talk a little bit about what Capri is, and what kind of company you are.
I'm Amy Shaneman from Capri Communities and Tarantino Development.
My name is Jim Tarantino. I'm the CEO of Capri and the principal owner of Capri Communities, as well as the principal owner of the real estate that we develop.
Okay. Perfect.
Do you have some questions?
We think of ourselves as owner-operators.
Okay.
So this development, this would be 25 acres, an age-restricted 55-plus community for the entire development. It would be comprised of rough, approximately 250 units total, give or, give or take. It would start with entry-level duplexes with two, two-bedroom duplexes, some quadplexes. It allows, this community allows for aging in place, so people could have different offerings on the campus, including independent apartments in that larger structure, assisted living and memory care. We're truly excited about this parcel. This would be the only senior living offering in the Pabst Farms development. Trends- Trends have changed with senior living. These types of developments are no longer put in, you know, rural areas. We're really excited about the connectivity because we do consider this an active adult campus with all of the different housing offerings, so the connectivity to the grocery store, the restaurants. We're, we're sort of a passive use in a way. Our residents are quiet. Senior living, though, is also a good transition to go, oftentimes in our successful developments, we bridge the gap from the commercial corridors, senior living is a suitable use, and then you can put residential behind it to sort of break that barrier to the commercial. And so we feel that this development, with all of the development occurring around it for our residents, to kind of go in off times, you know, go at 10:00 AM to use these uses or midday, it's kind of the timeframe for these seniors, it's going to promote even more business around, around the area.
Yeah, and I think it makes a lot of sense in terms of the transition piece. How many people do you envision being in that living community?
So again, it's 250 units. We will have some of those with couples. I would say it's usually about 60% is couples, and then that reduces as you go into the assisted living or healthcare supportive continuum of the campus. Our development will have underground parking for the main building for the independent living residence, and then there's garages for the, for all of the duplexes. So there's very little surface parking. The surface parking is reserved for the visitors or events and overflow, but primarily most of the parking is housed underground or concealed.
And, I mean, are you going to have staff that'll be working at this facility as well?
Yes.
I mean, how many people do you think you'll be hiring for your campus?
Totally, I, we would, right now, we would estimate somewhere between 40 and 50 total, and that would be three shifts of our assisted living and memory.
Okay.
Something a little bit different with our staffing structure there. We have a program called Core for Five. Our care staff work.
Can you come up to the speaker, the microphone, please? Thanks.
That helps us immensely with quality retention, people coming in from, joining us from outside of the healthcare industry, and we would anticipate that being a program that we would operate here as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the information. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I have one quick question for you and then my other one is maybe for Jason. So I'm assuming you are not nonprofit, you are a for-profit organization?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's the only question I have for you, but thank you. And then.
And you can sit down, thank you.
So there have been a lot of other good comments and questions. I won't repeat those. I'll kind of go in a different direction here. We're looking at single-family residential, couple new apartments, Capri senior living, and then Journey 21 has not even broken ground yet on their residential units. Do you have an estimate? I'm not holding you to, but do you have some kind of a range of an estimate of what the impact on our population will be? Because this is a comment we get from all of our citizens. We're growing too fast, we're growing too much, and I don't necessarily agree with that. I think our growth has been thoughtful and I think this is an indication of that. But do you have some type of a range of what you think the impact will be on our population?
No, I really haven't done that level of detail because these plans are so conceptual at this point. We're hearing, you know, 171 units for the Wingspan and we're hearing the numbers for the Capri Communities. I can, I can put maybe a spreadsheet together of all that and maybe get that out to you.
Yeah, it's nothing urgent, but just something that down the road, if we have an idea.
I guess keep in mind that when, when these projects do get built, they don't get built, you know, it, some of these take a while to build, like Journey 21, we approved that, you know, a couple of years ago probably, or a year and a half, and it's not there. So, you know, I have a feeling that if we, if we do grant approval to Capri, I think they will, you know, go fairly quickly. And I would think that the Wingspan apartments would go fairly quickly too, but it's still a several-year build-out for that.
Thanks, Jason.
I want to talk about something else, too. These are called planned developments, and per the ordinance, what a planned development is, is it allows the city to work with the, with the developers and give flexibility, but in return, the developer is to give a public benefit, okay? And, and we've, it's not a public benefit for the, for their site, it's supposed to be for the city as a whole, like a public transportation improvement. And there's been some requests made of staff that with all these projects coming forth, we should have them do a traffic study because there could be improvements needed that could be part of their public benefit. For example, this road right here, Pabst Farms Boulevard, I think the long-term, you can even see the, this red line is the property line, is supposed to be more contiguous with, with this Pabst Farms Boulevard and not come in a T. This would be the T actually coming from the north. So this intersection may need improvement. The other one is this intersection right here may need improvement. What that is, I don't know. We don't have the traffic study. Could that be traffic lights? It could be. Maybe they could help contribute towards that. Because if we have all these developments going forward, like Capri and this building is going for approvals right now too. It went to the Architectural Commission, it is public, but there's, there's four or five tenants in there, two of being restaurant use, Dunkin', and a BW wings place to go. So we have, we have, you know, projects coming in that should maybe contribute, so there's in such close proximity to this intersection. So there's ways to go on these. We don't, we want to make sure that, that the traffic can, can hold up to what we're bringing in. I think that's a really important part of when you're doing these big plans like this.
Thank you, Jason, for that clarification. Alderman Ellis.
I want to thank you guys for coming and sharing this master plan. I really appreciate. I'm kind of a visual-type guy. I like to see it and kind of mull over it a couple of times. There's a couple of concerns that I have. One is that on practically every page with, not every page, but I'd say the majority of them, I see a lot of apartments. And that concerns me an awful lot. I, I don't believe that the area was, I, I don't believe there, this is way too many apartments. I look at, the only time at which I do not see apartments are on L-2.1. Other than that, on every other page, I see a tremendous amount of those. Now granted, maybe it's very profitable for a builder to have as many apartments, but my concern with apartments, and it's my concern, it's probably no one else's, is the fact that they look really, really, really good for a very short period of time. And then what happens here is that they kind of start to look very bad. And that kind of concerns me, especially being that this is kind of right next to 94 in a sense. I'm wondering if you guys thought about adding more single-family homes? And Jason, if this is approved, which, I mean, there's going to be a lot of stuff that's going to happen, this won't be the final thing here. But if this is approved, what's going to happen to our percentage of single-family homes as compared to owner-occupied, as compared to renter? You see, this is the type of stuff that we were talking about that concerns a lot of our citizens here.
For clarity for the audience, just to, so you understand, as it relates to this plan, currently, the Plan Commission has already gone through an analysis and have given a recommendation of the ratio of single-family owner-occupied homes to renting residential facilities. And that has also been introduced to the Common Council. Common Council now is, is reaching out to the community to say, what do we want Oconomowoc to look like? To the point that Mr. Ellis made. And that will be coming back to the council most likely in, in April, excuse me, in April, in January. As you look at that ratio, those are guidelines in our comprehensive 2050 plan that we look at every five years. So those are things I want all of you to be aware of, that this entire council and the Plan Commission is really looking at not just what is being built in the next two to three to four years, but what is Oconomowoc going to look like in 10, 15, 20 years? So my hats off to the council and to the commissioners and to Jason, who has spent a tremendous amount of time and energy on that. And that's really why we're here today, and we really appreciate the work that the Pabst Farms group has done to try to put a bigger, comprehensive plan together so that hopefully we can put the appropriate infrastructure and put the right things in the right place. And we're not just throwing things here and throwing things there as they become available. So hats off to you, Mr. Bell and your team for bringing this back as we had requested this a little over a year ago, and we appreciate you doing that. I think it's really important that we continue to ask those questions, and that's what we're doing today. Mr. Ellis, are you done? May I move on to Alderman Altman-Cloth, or do you have more questions?
I just have one other statement to make. As far as the, the housing, I think I'd mentioned it already, as far as the traffic flow and things along those lines. It's almost to me, and once again, this is my own opinion, that you kind of are trying to just appease us with putting in, in this case, 68 or however many, the single-family homes that is. I, I think that this really, that, that portion really just needs to be looked at a little more because I, I really feel as though there's just way too many apartments in this whole, in this, in this whole thing. I'm done.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
I have a couple things. And I don't know if this is a Mr. Gallo question or not, but the conversations that we had about letter D, so the single-family homes and, you know, whether or not emergency vehicles, you know, could get in or out, like that concern, and should we have another access point? On the other side of that road is the neighborhood called The Ponds, which I know, I'm pretty confident doesn't have 73 homes back there. Do you know by any chance, like, how many homes are back there? Okay. But that only has that one access point, that in and out. And, I mean, to the best of our knowledge, we haven't had any major issues with not having.
Well, that's actually in the village of Oconomowoc Lake, and it's, those are much larger lots.
They are.
The density is a lot lower.
Okay.
You know, we could, we could, I've heard some good suggestions tonight. I heard some emergency access only, maybe, you know, between a couple of these lots, we could have one or even two. We could make the lots maybe a little slightly larger, 10,000 is fairly small. We could, we could bump that up to 15,000 or something.
Because my concern, and I, I get where Alderman, or Alderman Ellis is coming from, sorry. I was trying to say Ellis and Alderman at the same time. Is that road, that Pabst Road, I mean, if you've ever, which, this is not the safest thing to do, but if you've ever biked or ran back there, is not a very safe road.
Right, I've driven it, but I've never biked it.
Yeah, I, I don't recommend it. To create more access points on that road when it's already kind of not the most, it's not the safest road, I just, I don't know. I don't know if I would agree with that. But again, going back, you know, if we did traffic studies, maybe if the density was a little bit less, not 73 homes, you know, I don't know, just kind of thinking out loud. And then for letter C, it was mentioned that those would be 30,000 square feet each. But then on our sheet, it says 67,000 square feet. So is that 67 total between the two buildings?
Yeah.
So then they're roughly, okay, just making sure. And then, can you go back to like the big, like the, the main, the main image? All right, I'll leave my really big concern for the, for the end. I know at the end of the day, we're not going to have the say on this, but that H2, the one, the image on page L51, I really like aesthetically how that looks. I mean, I know that at the end of the day, that's going to look based on what businesses come in there, you know, that's probably going to drive that more than the council saying, we really like L51. But here's my big concern. I really like how most of this looks, like B2, B1, Z, you know, C, H2, you know, even Capri. It's, everything seems pretty spread out and not on top of each other. And I think, you know, one of the biggest things that we hear from our constituents is, which again, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with, but you know, you're taking away the farm fields, you're, you know, you're, you're, you're taking away all the beauty of Oconomowoc. So to keep something a little bit more, some of these, these other areas developed a little bit more spread out, I think kind of lessens that, that blow on building on these farm fields that people love so much. But then you take the Wingspan project, which in its entirety, I don't disagree with it. I mean, I do, there's some components to it that I really like, but like, Wingspan is something that's already kind of like in the queue for this. So when a developer comes in for, you know, let's say, B2, B1, and they, I know this is conceptual, but then they want to put in something more, is this whole, again, I apologize, I'm thinking out loud here, but I don't want to see this entire area look like the Wingspan area adjusted. That's really, I guess, not a question, Stephen. But Jason, if you want to respond. Just kidding.
Well, again, this is a general development plan, and this is, this is the kind of feedback, I think the developers are all in the room and they all need to hear this, of what your thoughts are. And even though it's, it's sometimes difficult to, to picture what this would look like or, or what the Wingspan, you know, they can, there's tools out there, there's fly-throughs and renderings and, and, you know, to get you to understand what you're approving. This is the very first step in this. But again, this is a general plan, and, and once this is approved, they have then some legal rights and obligations to come in with a plan that con, conforms to what, that you said yes to. So it's very important to get this right in the front end. So if you're concerned about the open space and the amount of, of density, I mean, yeah, we can have them look at that.
Yeah, no, I like the open space. I don't want to see it too dense in the end.
Your comments are great. I think that the one thing that's kind of holding this together is that, you know, you're seeing a really wide spectrum of uses, you know, everything from general commercial to business to residential apartments, single-family, you've got the full spectrum. And, and our job was to knit this together. And so what we have even up on the A parcels, all the way down to the Wingspan parcels, is you're, you're seeing the, the patterning and the scale broken up. It's not farm field, it's not, still, Pabst is not growing spearmint out here on, on the parcels that we're showing you, but they're, they're showing that there's pedestrian spaces between buildings, there's breathing room, there's airspace. And I think that that's the one thing that we can kind of keep in mind as we, as we go forward here and not to say it, it doesn't have human scale to it. So I think that that's what's, that's what's a universal element, and then we can bring in pedestrian and connectivity to the architecture, to the, to the parking and to the access. So.
And, and I think where Wingspan is, the density works for them because they have 94 right there. We're, you know, you guys are going to keep that existing wetland and, you know, kind of forest area. They have kind of their own little green, you know, space that they're going to incorporate in, so that works. But I just, I worry that in some of the other areas, if it's too dense, it's, it won't work.
Well, and one other comment, this is Alderman Ellis's comment about the, the building product type, the apartments versus single-family, what's the appropriate use? And really, we're trying to kind of build up to a crescendo here. You know, you've got kind of the key locations along Summit Avenue that really is, and even along 94 and the, and the off-ramp, those are, those are kind of the, you know, 100%, you know, high visibility, high accessibility. And, and what you're seeing here- And what you're seeing here is it transitions, you know, out to East Lake Village, to Lake Country Village, to Interlochen. And you've seen a graduated density. And so I think that that's appropriate. It would be inappropriate to start to throw a single-family residential development into the mix that we've shown you. The pieces that are left here are the pieces that need to have density, but the density needs to be moderated so it has some, you know, human scale to it. So I think that that, from a planning perspective, whether this is specific to this property, I think that that's a universal planning kind of technique that we've applied, but specific to this, to Oconomowoc, to the city and to this site, so.
Alderman Rozak.
Well, thank you. Let me start out by thanking Paps developers for bringing in the plan. I think it's something we've asked for, and it's been more than a year. It's actually significantly longer. But overall, my overall comments are I like a lot of what's in the plan. I think there's some good stuff in there. I don't mind some of the changes that are being made. I think it's something we need to think about. As to the farm field comments, we've heard that in other developments, like when we did Olympia, well, there's this great place where all the deer run, you know, and the old golf course. I'm like, well, you don't own the golf course. So I think we need to give the developers some ability to build the density. They need to do what they need to do. And the original density out there was going to be, very early on, sir, there was like a fly. Very early on, there was going to be a regional mall, which would have been a very intense use for that area. So what we're seeing proposed is probably less intense than that. But a couple of other quick comments. Well, let me start out with this. I had written this on page two. This is really serious stuff we're looking at. So this shouldn't be just done when, one meeting. I think our comments tonight should be hopefully kind of refined and taken to the developers, and they need to look at this stuff carefully. This will define this area again for a very large period of time. And I think there's more impetus to actually start moving, especially with Wingspan and Capri interested in the land, with Jerry Erdman doing stuff in the other corner. So this is really important. And when we asked for this was around the time of Hackney House, when that was built. And Jason, how many units are Hackney House? 800? 700? It seems like 800 sometimes at rush hour. So when you start talking about adding apartments, think about that add. So if it's 300, 310 units, that's a lot of apartments. And we did that, this council did that. And that was a mistake. So my other comments, there are no industrial uses. There were some comments about, you know, let's not shut down industrial use. There is no industrial zoning in this area, right? It's business park, but that's not industrial. Light industrial use. But you can't do full-on manufacturing in that area.
Yes, you can.
Why do we have a separate industrial section then?
Business park allows for hotels, restaurants, other more.
That's not commercial?
Jason, can you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, you should come up to the mic.
The question was the difference between business park and industrial zoning. This business park zoning down here does allow for manufacturing, assembly, warehousing, distribution, trucking, you know, all of the above. But why wouldn't that be in the industrial zoning district that we have out on like Capital Drive and some other pockets in the city? Business park also allows for restaurants, you know, hotels, things that the industrial zoning doesn't allow for.
So it allows additional uses beyond just the light or whatever industrial you want to do, full-blown industrial.
Right.
So with that comment and with that answer, then this development and the whole overlay needs it, for at least what we're being presented with tonight, needs three zoning changes, land use plan changes, plan development overlay changes, general development overlay changes. And the few questions I had about this section down here where there's potential for distribution centers, there needs to be more, you know, refinement there. And I think we need to really seriously consider whether we include KN, Y, and KS in this planned and create some of those other buffer zones with, you know, in fact, Jason mentioned this, and we should think about what our planner is actually telling us. He said that should be a transitionary period over there in KN, between there and some of the housing. This is our chance to do this right. And this is our chance to get something for all the requests that are being asked. So if we don't make some changes and we don't ask for something, we're not going to get it. And it's our job as Common Council members and as the Planning Commission members, for our citizens and the people that actually live here, is to make sure this is all done right. Not leave a blank slate that could become a million-square-foot warehouse someday or a 400,000-square-foot distribution center. And we have seen plans, on two separate plans, with a very, very large distribution center over that whole period from Y to KS. So it's incumbent upon us, if they're asking for changes, they're asking for new stuff, they're asking for zoning changes, to get something back. So I'd like us to look very carefully at that section. I think that's the most important section. I am concerned about some of the apartments as well, and I think there can be some discussion about the numbers. But I think this section is also very important. It's kind of like this big black hole on the end of the development. And it's got to be considered, otherwise I'm not going to vote for the plan. That's all I have.
So I'd like to give the HOA president from the adjoining community, if you have a chance, if you have any comments you'd like to share as a representative of your group, we're welcome to do that. Please keep them short. And please introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Campion Jakes, president of the Village Crossing of Paps Farms condominium association. Appreciate the opportunity to certainly hear what you're planning, what you're discussing. And certainly, we appreciate the opportunity to give our voice. My understanding, and I'm a new resident, I've only been here since last September, but my understanding is that the condominium association or the condominium complex actually began construction back in 2008. If that's true, that means that in 2008, you were thinking about residences. You were thinking about homeowners. You were thinking about people who expect to have some peace and quiet, some land space to have recreation, and also just to enjoy the Lake Country environment that we purchased, that we moved into. So my only concern, when we look at the Wingspan specifically, is that that definitely, especially that would be the northwest portion of that property, is right across the street from my condo. So I'm very interested in how we're going to buffer and how we're going to control some of the traffic, the density, the noise, what comes with that. We're not naive. We saw that there were for-sale signs when we bought and built there. So we know that there was going to be some form of development. In fact, I think I even called Jason and asked him, what was the planning for that area? All we ask is that you do consider the fact that on the other side of the street, there are some residences. There are some people who are trying to enjoy a better part of their life. That's basically seniors, it's basically people who have downsized, like myself. And we just want to enjoy that environment and take advantage of all the other, certainly, you know, the commercial things that you're developing. It's great. But just remember that we'd like a buffer.
Thank you.
You bet.
So I'd like to ask any of the folks that are in this development plan, including the Paps Farm Group, if you have any additional comments you'd like to share with the council and with the commission. Any lasting questions from any of the commissioners or any of the council members? Alderman Shellpepper.
Infrastructure-wise, I know we talked about the streets. Is there anything else? I mean, sewer wrecks? Are there other things that we're thinking the city's going to need to build, public infrastructure-wise, to make this development happen in any way?
Mr. Frye?
No, we've looked at this, and, you know, obviously, we have the upgrade in Oconomowoc Parkway that we're working on now for a section of it. But the whole lower section goes to a different sanitary sewer. So we have ample capacity, both sanitary sewer water and electric for this development.
Okay, so the streets are going to be the big piece to this then?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Frederick.
Just one quick thing, or two quick things. I'm looking at this as a planning commissioner from a land use standpoint. What's proper land use out here? And one of the things that we've heard with the last land use comp plan change, and more recently, is the need for elderly or for housing to move in a campus-type situation or places for elderly to move to. This plan does address that issue. And we don't have any other areas in the city really identified for this type of campus situation. So I think it makes sense from a land use standpoint here. And Alderman Ellis had a concern over apartments and that nature. And we look at elderly a little bit different than apartments. So I just want to make that clarity when you look at the housing ratio, that this is a need from a land use standpoint that makes a lot of sense. So I like that aspect. Also on land use, I'd like to leave that to the landowners to decide what's their best business plan. Looking at Wingspan and 300-plus thousand square feet of technology base, I hope that's the right decision. I'm not comfortable with the definition of it and what's included there and can that area support that. I'm relying on their business plan for that. So from a land use standpoint and from a visibility standpoint, it can make sense. I just, it's also an area, we want it to be successful. We don't want it to fall short where it's at. And I'm hoping there's some way we can feel, that I could feel better about that. And just one other additional, just from the traffic standpoint, it'd be helpful to see which streets in here are public streets versus private streets as going forward, so we know how to address that.
Lot of work to be done, a lot of great conversations. Thank you all for coming for this section of our committee of the whole meeting. We'll need to close both the commission and the council on two different, separate motions and votes. So I'd like to entertain a motion to close the Plan Commission meeting for December 5, 2023.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the Common Council Committee of the whole meeting at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. We'll take about two or three minutes, and we'll then start with our city council meeting. Council meeting. Well, welcome back, everybody. I'm going to go ahead, are you ready? I'd like to call to order the City of Oconomowoc Common Council meeting for Tuesday, December 5, 2023. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
I know it has.
If we'd please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please call and roll?
Alderman Douglas. Alderman Rozak.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for November 21, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
We're on to our comments and suggestions from citizens. If you'd like to make a comment and share your opinions with the Common Council this evening, please fill out a blue card right up here in the front, and you're welcome to make a comment. You have three minutes to share your thoughts and ideas about any topic within the city. And I do have one card so far. If you'd please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and what city or community you live in, and you will have three minutes. Bertis Gallbreth.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I know you guys have been busy today, so I'll make it short. I just wanted to come introduce myself and let you know that I put my hat, my name in the hat for the Waukesha County Board Supervisor position for the District One area. I would love to be able to help out our community as much as Tyler Fode did. But I'm here to help, all right? So I was born and raised here in Oconomowoc, graduated from high school here, joined the military for a short 30 years. A short 30 years? And then retired from there, retired from Johnson &amp; Johnson, making AccuView contact lenses, and then moved back here. I have a bachelor's degree in human resources with a minor in supervision and management, as well as a, I'm a Master Six Sigma Black Belt. So I think my services could help Oconomowoc through the county. Thank you.
Well, great. And you are currently on two appointments, correct?
I'm on two boards, the zoning board. I'm on two, two boards, the zoning board and the Board of Appeals. And I also co-owner of Violet Blue and Violet Table Downtown.
Great. Well, thank you for putting your name in the hat and we wish you the best in the election.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another option. We have two more. Jordan Fall. Jordan?
Hello, I'm Jordan Fall, 103 East Forest Street, here to talk about the proposed dog park within Roosevelt Park. The first thing I want to bring, I know that we have met a couple times, and just the concern about the traffic that it's going to bring to the intersection of Forest Street and Main Street, because as of right now, the plans have the dog park entrance going in right where the public works area is. We live on that corner there. Excuse me. And seeing the families with strollers, little kids learning how to ride bikes going through that area, I think adding that, adding a dog park entrance and exit to that area, I think is irresponsible and not safe. I know I've talked to Jennifer and Eric and you, Mr. Mayor, about what about moving the parking lot further south into the park and having the entrance and exit off of Gene Street, just a way to alleviate some of the traffic that is already in that intersection. And Mr. Police Officer, I know that you guys sit there and watch cars not use the stop sign. So I just think moving that back would be a very smart decision and a safe decision. The other thing I would like to get on record is, I know, Mr. Mayor, you and I talked about possibly birmingham up that area for some privacy, so the parking lot isn't right there. I know that you, we have discussed putting trees, bushes on that berm just for some privacy, and just wanted to get that out there so people know that that is a discussion that we've had and something that we are appreciative of.
And for the record, that's, that's accurate. That's correct.
Yeah. And I just wanted to let
No problem.
Everybody be, know that.
It was a great discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Shayfall.
I'm with that guy.
Okay. I don't believe, I don't believe we've met, have we?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
No problem. We have now. Great.
Yeah, I'm with that guy. So I just, for the record, would like to say that we don't want a dog park next to our house. I think that that ship has sailed. However, I just hope that moving forward with the planning, that it's taken into consideration that there's people's homes right next to it. And up until this point, I feel like some of the communication has been somewhat biased and like underrepresented of the people that are actually right next to the dog park, because the entire side will be people's homes. And I think just moving forward, it'd be nice to have a bit more of a voice in what's happening in that space, since it is right next to our house and it affects us a great deal. I mean, I don't think anyone really wants to live next to a dog park, even if they like the idea of a dog park. So that is how we're feeling right now. Okay?
Thank you very much. Do we have any, any more blue cards? Does anybody else want to make a public comment at this time?
What's their address again?
What's that?
Where, what's your address again? Okay. All right. Thank you.
With no further comments, I'd like to move to consent agenda items, which have the license approval. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the committee reports, we'll start with finance. Consider Act on Resolution 23-R3-162, authorizing a budget amendment using TIF 4 funding for the Oz Plaza construction. Ms. Mary Sullivan, Sullivan, Marie.
Thank you. So as we're getting close to the end of the expenditure period for TIF number four, we're taking a look at what's left in its project plan, what more can be done or should be done with TIF 4 funding. Currently, there's a desire to move some of TIF 4's dollars to help with the Oz Plaza next door. We take a look at the project plan, and that's a perfectly acceptable use of those dollars. $200,000 keeps us within our project plan budget and also is available funds at this time. Next month, we'll come back to council and talk about the rest of TIF 4. So when I said the expenditure period ends in 2025, what's remaining in the project budget is $1.4 million for waterfront and kind of boardwalk water access areas. $1.4 million in the TIF district. I think in January, we'll come back and take a look at whether or not the council wants to use those funds for the Village Green area or the boardwalk area, which are included within the TIF 4. Otherwise, we will look to close the TIF district soon. So that'll be, that'll be a decision of the council. But for right now, the Oz Plaza is looking for $200,000 for construction there. And as I told the finance committee, those dollars are available within the TIF district without changing the life whatsoever.
I'd like to open up for discussion or comments. I know you went through finance earlier this evening. Alderman Rosick.
What are we all getting for the 200 grand? Are we doing everything there except bathrooms? We're doing the whole?
No, that would be, basically would be slated for construction in that area. I'm thinking it's mostly concrete work and someone else can help me, but.
Brickwork.
Brickpaver. So that whole area over there would be brickpaver. We'll be adding more statues to the area and then some other features, but it'd be cleaning up that entire area where right now we're only using half of it for the Oz Plaza.
So the TIF dollars are really for the construction part. And Bob and Karen, they've got other donations for statues and amenities.
I know we've seen previous plans in the past. On this one, it'd be nice to kind of see where we're at now, what we're approving, because I, we're 200 grands out there, I get it, you know, but I'm not quite sure what we're approving to do.
Alderman, Eric, you can go in.
Mayor, I can jump in. So I spoke with Director of Parks, Eric Batcher, this morning or yesterday. He actually came in and asked if I thought it'd be appropriate to do a staff report of some type next, at the next council meeting, because the bids are going to be going out on that soon. And so we're getting the funding. We'll come and discuss what it's going to look like. He's already taken it through the park board, and then we'll be bringing back the project.
Oh, for the final approval?
For the final approval. So you'll still have, you'll still have the option. Alderman Spiegelberg.
So nothing, as far as the concept, nothing has really changed dramatically. You know, we have found out that the concrete is going to be probably one of the biggest expenses. We're also, you know, fortunate enough to have like utilities, be able to do some, a lot of the workforce, including electric. As of today, I think this 200 is a good use of this money. What else we have that I reiterated in the finance committee is, we got a donation from Oconomowak Area Foundation for $10,000. We got other outside donations of $35,000 and then $40,000 is coming from tourism. So that puts us at about 295 right now. Our original budget was like 150 before we were kind of thinking how costly this concrete was going to be. So I'm hoping for 295, we can get this done and maybe even less than that, which means we wouldn't even have to use potentially all of the 200. So.
Alderman Shellpepper.
So that's for the initial piece. Then there's the extended piece. You said we'd be talking about extra like 1.3 million that we'd have to figure out?
It's a total of 1.4 million. We would designate 200 for Oz Plaza. And then there's 1.2 million in the project budget available that we will talk about in January if you're looking for plans for, the only other spaces really would be over by the Village Green area and the boardwalk right there.
Like for a bathroom or something?
You know, we'll have to talk and I'll look at it. I don't think so, because it's waterfront improvements.
That discussion's not on the agenda, but it was what we discussed.
But we'll bring it in January.
Okay. All right. Yeah, well, I won't go there.
Cool. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Any further questions or comments? Call and roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
On to our next item. Consider Act on the Resolution 23-R3-165, authorizing annual indexing of impact fees and sewer availability charges effective January 1st, 2024.
Okay, so this is the annual impact fee indexing that we do. We use an index for that. It's called the Construction Cost Index. And this year, that amount is 2.37%. So basically, if you look at the chart in your handout, you can see what the charges were for 2023 and then increased by 2.37%. The utility impact fee for the North Intercepters, the only one that's different, it uses the LGIP or Local Government Investment Pool rate for the indexing, and that one is at 4. I just lost it. I'm sorry, 4.57%.
Questions or comments? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Rosick. Second?
Call and roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
On to new business. Consider Act on the Resolution 23-R3-167, approving the Lake Country Municipal Court 2024 budget.
We're gonna wait for the people to leave, Don.
Mr. Lemur.
Makes life a lot easier.
It was full before. They knew I was coming and evacuated. I do hire out for that service for your council meetings. Hi, you've got a copy of our budget for next year. We're doing great. We're looking at probably ending the year somewhere between, in the black, between $17,000 and $27,000. So we're doing really good. Our expenditures will be under budget and that's part of that $17,000 to $27,000 that we're going to come ahead.
So you want to donate that excess to the city? Is that what you said?
I think we do that, Mayor, through rent.
You can pay more.
You can pay more.
I'll second that.
So moved.
Go ahead, say what's on your mind.
I'm sensitive, so be easy with me.
Oh my God, I'm gonna have a heart attack.
No EMTs.
I do have some good news. We are in the process right now of working with the City of Della Field to bring them into our court. And that has been a plan for 20, 30 years that Della Field would come in once they suspend their court over there, so.
What do you think the impact will be? Just curiosity for case load?
It's not gonna be bad. I, I think City Della Field writes between 600 and 800 tickets a year. What this is gonna do, we've got no problem fitting them in our schedule. They, they'll be here on the third Friday in the morning once a month, but that added income from their court fees will assure the court continued, you know, a positive flow for many years to come.
Okay.
You know, the key is keeping the, keeping the staff. We only have two full timers and we've got two part timers. And we did do some salary adjustments this year and tried to get them up. We did a study on area court clerks and we were a little bit low. So we brought that up this year and I think we've set the plateau now for future years for looking at just inflationary increases.
Alderman Ellis.
When do you think that's gonna happen? When are they gonna come over?
No later than May. Their judge died and they can, they want to leave the court within, when his term ends. And what we, what you don't want to do is have a special election, because once Della Field's part of the court, they get to vote for judge. So they're gonna come in and then when their, their court terminates at May 1st, then they'll step into our court. So once they come in, they can't get back out, so we'll be fine. They don't know that, but.
Any other comments or questions?
One quick.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Good to see you, Don. What percentage of Della Field's tickets compared to the overall, would you say?
There'll be less than, a lot less than Hartland. They're probably equivalent, maybe to Lisbon, maybe Summit.
Okay. Which is approximately what percentage, or?
I don't know what the percentage on it is. I just know what, what the cases are for.
And that we can handle that?
For that, but the, out of the 30, out of every ticket that goes through court, the court receives $38 and that goes towards our, our cost to do business, so.
So you feel you can handle them and there's no increase in operating costs?
None, none whatsoever. Nope.
Okay, great.
And I think that'll put us at 21, 22 communities. That's enough.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you what the goal was.
To stay solvent.
Besides that.
Yeah, but I think that was it. But Della Field was, has been on the horizon forever. And their judge was there for 40 years.
Wow.
Wow.
And he died, so this is opportunity for them to come in. It won't cost Della Field nothing, so they'll save $35,000 a year by suspending their court. And we just asked that you approve our budget and that resolution and send a copy back to the court.
Donnie, do you want to introduce your protege here?
That's Sean.
Hi, Sean.
Yes, he's a friend of my grandson's and he's, I think he's a future politician.
Yes, he's actually coming.
Oconomowak Lake or?
You live in the city, right? Yeah.
Well, in the city.
We don't allow youth in Oconomowak.
Wait a minute, I resemble that.
Wow.
Ernie also.
There's a dis, there's.
And council, and, and thank you. We're still getting compliments on our courtroom over there. One of the prosecutors for Della Field, their firm also represents Johnson's Creek, and they had an opportunity to be at court and they were just awed by how it looks, the formality and how it's laid out. So we did a good job. And your chief is on the operations committee, so. And he's been there and he's an asset, so.
And Sean, welcome. He's spent a couple ti, couple trips. We met at the mayor's office and talked about future careers in municipal work and really excited that you're here learning about what we do. Great.
There's an alderman in District 2 that's up for election.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Rosick, so moved.
Second?
Call and roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Next up, Consider Act on the Flock Camera Policy. Captain Tim.
Thank you. I'm not gonna be able to top that one. Just want to start in saying that flock is not new technology. It's just new to us. Kind of going back two weeks to committee the whole, we talked about the policy that we put forward. You guys gave us some great suggestions, recommendations, and now in front of you is kind of what we have come up in the last couple of weeks for you to again review. Again, if there's any more suggestions, otherwise looking for approval of our flock policy and moving forward with our project.
I'd like to open up for discussion. You have in front of you, Alderman Shellpepper.
It's not a new technology, Captain Tim, but you know, when we're talking about overall percentages of how many municipalities and police departments there are in the state of Wisconsin, we're talking, you know, 2,500, 3,000.
Yep.
We've got 97 or so.
Correct.
Using it. So we're, you know, we're talking like 3% or less of overall departments, municipalities. So.
Yep, correct.
We should be clear that while it's not new, it's not like everybody's using it. We star, still are on the newer end of use of the technology.
That's correct, but it is, it is growing pretty quick in that side. We're kind of jumping on right now at a good point.
I agree. And I just think it's, you know, important when we're talking about laying out the policy that we're creating around this, that, you know, I think we had gotten some sideways looks, well, we're the only, one of the only people doing this. Well, in, in some ways, we're one of the only people doing the flock overall, you know, in the state. So I think it's reasonable that we're setting some guidelines here that we're, you know, putting the policy in place. I think at a state level, it's like traffic cameras are, you know, red light cameras are governed through state statute, but something as important as the, the flock camera is kind of like willy-nilly, every community can do what it wants. We're not going to set any, you know, more, more clear guidelines at the state level. And that's, I feel like, an abdication of the, you know, responsibility that the state government has to look out for the state as a whole. Why would we have, you know, statutes on red light cameras but not flock cameras? It doesn't make any sense. But I do appreciate. It doesn't make any sense. But I do appreciate that we put this together, that we, you know, have some guidelines here in place. I would have still liked to have seen limit our sharing use only to the state of Wisconsin. Right now, I see that we kept it in to basically, you know, anybody who requests it for a legitimate law enforcement purpose. I think, you know, I, it, I, I understand that's, that's probably, you know, where the, not where the majority's at, so I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, supporting what we have on, on the books right now.
What I think what's, it's important too, is, as you've mentioned, once we're up and operational, we definitely want to have, come back, give a report, look at this, because we're starting a policy, but that policy may need to be modified or tweaked as we move forward.
Yeah, well, I just think on the auditing piece, and I don't know if audit's the right word, but, you know, we, we did look for some monthly reports. We talked, or I don't know if it's monthly, but we looked for some, some sort of retroactive.
Correct.
Reporting guidelines, or guidelines, but, but act, you know, request, and I think you'll honor that request, and.
Most definitely.
You know, we'll get, we'll understand how we're using it, and I look forward to seeing how it's used, and, you know, what cases we can solve with it, so.
Great. Alderman Rozick.
Yeah, I think the changes that were made were, were what I asked for, and were good. The biggest change, I think, for folks being protected from an overreaching state or federal government was Section D 7A, which is we're only honoring data requests from other flock programs, so. I mean, the point, if we're going to have the system, which I did vote against, but if we're going to have the system, we do want to kind of coordinate with the other flocks, you get the best use of the system. But Alderman Shellpepper, you did make a comment last time about still doing an ordinance. I, I don't think an ordinance is something that I would be against. I think it's something we should maybe still look into, maybe after six months or a year.
It sounded like.
Yeah, I think we, we look into how this policy's working, how it's doing, and then we, we look into an ordinance, but the hard part is when we, when we push that down the line, it may never happen. So I think we should stay on that. I think potentially we, you know, after the first year, I'm not going to draft one over Christmas time here, but maybe after the first year, we actually start drafting something with, you know, assistance of the police department on what an ordinance would look like, you know, incorporate the key aspects of the policy that will always have to be in the policy, despite changes later on. So that's what I would like to do, i- if your game, you know, you and I could work on that together.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Did you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Spiegelberg.
So we have had some extra thought and tweaking going into this policy, which I think is a good thing from the standpoint, like you said, this is not new technology, but it's sort of new to us and new to a lot of communities. But by what we do here in Oconomowoc, we will now be an example and a benefit to other communities within the state, and I, I think that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
Any further comments, questions? Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Altman-Cloth.
Second, Ellis.
Any further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Under staff reports, thank you, Captain. There are no staff reports today. Are there any reports or comments from Alderman today? Alderman Altman-Cloth.
I'd like to make a comment based on the public comment from earlier from the family that lives next to the dog park. I know you have had extensive conversations with them, so have Eric and I, extensive email exchanges, you know, just for the record, when Eric emails or I email, that's technically Eric and I kind of working together on those emails. I think there's been some, some miscommunication there. And then in terms of the traffic, the in and out on Forest and Main, when Jordan first brought that to us, Eric and I right away identified that as an issue. We've already talked to Chief Fister about it. We have actually went back to them and have let them know, like, how much we appreciate them pointing that out, and that has been addressed. And then the berm, I mean, actually, just the other day, Eric and I were talking about that. So that is something that, you know, is definitely going to go forward, and you know, we, we understand that, you know, they are greatly impacted by it being right next door, and, you know, we've gone above and beyond to see what we can do to make it comfortable for them, and as well as make it safe for the community in terms of, you know, the traffic flow in and out, so. That's all.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Ellis.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all council, especially the mayor, for the tunnel being opened.
That's cool.
I, it was a long time coming, a very long time coming, and thanks for all the support. I also want to put on record those individuals, Jay Larson, Derek Swart, Tom Stray, Ken Harrow, Mike Miller, Matt Rozick, Charlie Shore, and David Noel, because they were very instrumental years ago in thinking, hey, we need to have something there because we could have a problem. So I really, really, really want to thank those guys for their forth, for their, for their knowledge and, and understanding what we would need in the future. So, that's all.
Other comments from Alderman? Alderman Spiegelberg.
Couple great things, obviously, in the city, the holiday train that came through, and then probably we heard the most highly attended Christmas parade, and both of those were a great success. It just makes our community shine, and it's so much fun.
Other comments? Only comments I have is, wow, what a weekend. Tunnel open, Christmas parade, all the different activities. Then finished it off with the holiday train on Monday, which was a lot of fun. I did invite Kevin Peeler, the Citizen of the Year, so he jumped on the train and rode from Oconomowoc to Watertown. Kevin has given so much to the city, it's incredible, and we want to do something special, so as a mayor, you get two tickets to ride on, and I'm a train, I'm crazy, I love trains, so it was really, really fun. And we got off in Watertown and saw how they had it all set up, and I love Oconomowoc. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
The meantime, his wife was volunteering at the Oconomowoc food pantry.
Yeah, my wife, yeah.
You didn't say Watertucky.
Turney riffle.
Jeez. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn quickly.
Motion to adjourn.
Quickly.
Motion to adjourn quickly.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful, have a wonderful week, and the holidays.